And whenever you're ready, Jason.
Right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 10th Planning Commission meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will lead us in it, I guess, since we have it behind you, Steve. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it's.
Nations.
And our God.
Nation.
Justice for all.
Justice for all.
Hot on my chair. Thank you. Okay. I've got a statement I have to read before this. We get started here in accordance with the Utah Code, Section 52-3-27, Subpart 4. I've determined that conducting a meeting in the Roy City Council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who would be present. The basis of this determination is that due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effect of contracting COVID-19 virus, there is not sufficient space in the council chambers to provide appropriate safe physical distancing for the safety of the individuals who would attend. Accordingly, the November 10th, 2020 meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location. Okay. We will move to Agenda Item Number One, which should be a declaration of conflicts. Do any commissioners have a conflict they need to declare at this time?
No.
No.
There being none, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which will be approval of the September 22nd, 2020 work session minutes. Are there any changes need to be suggested? If not, I will need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for September 22nd.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Those work session minutes are approved. Go to my agenda item number three, which will be the approval of the October 13th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes, suggestions that need to be changed on this one?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the meetings are, or the minutes are approved. Okay, Steve, do we, is it time for you, or do we have a proponent first? Let's do the proponent.
I will announce the item. You'll want to announce the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Agenda Item Number Four, we have, is a public hearing to consider a request to amend the future land use map from mixed use to light industrial for prop, the property located at approximately 2449 West, 4,000 South. And the second item is also a public hearing to consider request to amend the zoning map from RE20 residential estates to LM Light Manufacturing for property located approximately 449 West, 4,000 South. Okay. Steve?
Both proponents are here. Matt Peterson. And for some odd reason, Josh keeps going back to attendee when I keep promoting him to a panelist. Matt, if you're, you're gonna mute yourself and your video.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hey, there's Josh Langley. Well, Matt, if you're ready, go ahead.
Sorry, it's breaking up a little bit.
It is you.
Okay, we're just looking to get approval to do storage units on that 10 acre piece of ground that we have. Prior to that, we were looking at getting townhomes approved, but there's just not the access in and out for that to work with fire code. So we'd like to, we'd like to, since it's right there by the tracks, we think that the best use for it at this point would be a storage unit facility.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
How many units are we looking at?
Um, it depends. We probably do five acres of actual storage units and the other five acres just open storage where people could have campers and things like that. It really all depends on how big of units we do, probably a couple hundred in that five acre piece.
That would all, and then just, just so you know, that would all depend on what the site plan submitted. It's not really something that we would know the answers to until you get to the nitty gritty and the details. So.
Exactly.
It's the use they're looking for.
Thank you.
So on this particular piece of property, you have access from the north. And then there's a, it looks like to the south a little ways, there's an existing, well, it's under construction, but there's a residential development under construction still down there. There's no access from that point?
There's not. There's two five acre parcels between our piece and where that development is. And one of them is owned by a gentleman in North Carolina who's not interested in selling his property. And the other piece is owned by Hooper Water, and they're just going to be putting water storage tanks there.
Okay, and they both get access from the north?
Um, there's an easement that runs along the entire stretch from 4,800 to 4,000. So the, right now, currently, the water company uses that easement to go along there, but yeah. It's right, right along the walking trail.
And this property up until recently, well, prior to 2017, it looks like it was light industrial, and then it was changed to residential, and then it's back to, we're going back to light, is that, did I misunderstand that?
The general plan was changed.
Oh, the general plan, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, it's all, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
I have one more question. Um, do you have any idea of how that's going to impact that walking trail? Or will it even?
It wouldn't impact it whatsoever. There's still a 30 foot easement from the walking trail that UTA has. Yeah, it would be at least 30 feet away from the, from the current walking trail, from the edge of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Steve, is, do we have another person speak, or is this, is he all, it for now?
I don't know, is Josh gonna talk at all, Matt, or?
Maybe he could say something and liven this meeting up, maybe make it entertaining for everybody. No, but that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. At this stage, we would like to just get this approved for sense with all the feedback that there's been from the surround neighbors and with what was previously going to get approved there. This seems like kind of a easier win-win for everybody, less traffic, less everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Hey. Hopefully this all works. Everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Come on, there we go. Can you see just one screen, or do you have multiple?
One.
One.
One screen.
One.
Let's hope it all works. Okay, so as mentioned, did it change to script? You see writing?
Yes.
So as mentioned, this is a public hearing for, to consider the amendment to the future land use map of the general plan for mixed use to light industrial. And also the zoning map from RE20, which is residential estates to light manufacturing for the same property. I did have a question that this address that is listed on here puts it at a different location, but the unfortunate part is all these properties from the city, the quick muffler down to the Hooper Water all have the same address of 2949 West, 4,000 South. Reason of this is there is no road and when buildings are built is generally when they get addressed. And most of them were pre, I don't know how you want to say it, pre something of, where permits weren't giving addresses to buildings. So moving on, this is kind of the location, you've got the east, or on the red little dot line is the the active rail line, you see the front runner station there to the east of it. The blue dash is the DNRD trail, and the highlighted property is the 10 acres that Matt and Josh have requested to change zone. And you can see to the north, there are sheds and whatnot, and to the south, it's vacant. And then you get some trees, and then you have the single family development of West Park subdivision. Which from what I've heard is the last building permit had been issued for that subdivision. Before 2017, or before the adoption of the Focus Roy Plan, as you see here, the area was general plan wise to be light manufacturing. When the Focus Roy Plan came about and they looked at it, they were looking at the front runner station and how can they help provide ridership for that, and they amended to have that whole area be mixed use, type developments, more down, the front runner station was more residential, but it would allow for some commercial and, and by the front runner. Hence the, the reason to change it. Now, again, the reason why I put in the, the pre front or Focus Roy Plan 2017 is because you can see that, at the, from who knows when to, to 2017, light manufacturing was the desired use. Then it changed in 2017. Now, the zoning map, which doesn't change with the, you know, the amendments to general plans. Last general plan that was updated was 2002. The area that's in question here is in dark green, the RE20. Now, why this zone was picked between it, I have no idea. As Matt had mentioned, originally, they wanted to do multifamily in this area, but were unable to obtain a second access. UTA won't let, allow them to go across the DNRD trail and then heading north with the six property owners to the north, they would have to purchase the right of way to make it a public right of way, rather than the 30 foot easement that currently exists. It's private easement is for all those properties, even down to the, the West Park subdivision. So they are just looking to rezone the 10 acres to be the same as those properties to the north of them, and the same to the properties to the south of them. Some of the questions that the Planning Commission will need to reflect upon as they are discussing this is, does changing or not changing the zone provide the best options for development for this property or area? And how can this property best be developed, either as multifamily residential or as manufacturing? A typical of, of staff, we did not make a recommendation for this. The reason is, is Focus Roy would like it to be mixed use residential to help with the front runner station. But the physicality of the land down there makes it almost impossible if you can't get that second access for anything to be built down there. Reason why storage units could work is it falls under a different requirement for the fire department because there is no living quarters. So the requirements for them change and don't require a second access. So with that, the staff would leave it to the Planning Commission to come up with their own thoughts and opinions. Staff could go either way, so we didn't make a recommendation. Any questions?
When we go into the public hearing, do we do two of them, or just one to cover both?
Uh, it's the same item, so I would just pull, open up for both of them. When you do vote, it does need to be two separate motions. No other questions, I will stop sharing my, my screen and we do have several individuals who would like to speak and who have, who are on to talk during the public hearing, so.
Okay. Well, with no other questions for Steve. Then we'll be looking to go into our public hearing. Based upon how many people we have that are speaking here tonight, we would like to limit your talking to five minutes, try to keep it around there. If somebody else has basically said the same thing that you are going to say, just pretty much reiterate that. You don't really need to repeat everything word for word for somebody else, but this is your time, so. Being that, we'll go ahead and I'll look for a motion to open this to a public hearing.
I moved.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing.
Okay, so I'll go on the order that they contacted me. So the first gentleman will be Ed Weakland. He just owns property to the north of that. Let me get him over to be a panelist so we can see him and then hear from him. There he is. I know he's, he's working off of the phone, so, Ed, if you could just unmute yourself and then go ahead and talk. There you go. Ed, can you hear us? We can't hear you, Ed. Ed, if you want to call, call me on my desk phone, then I can put you on speaker, and then they can hear you. It's 774-1027. Unfortunately, I'm just, we're not hearing you, Ed. There he is, hold on. Hello, Ed?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can you, can you guys hear Tim?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Well, first, in this new meeting. The main thing I want to say is, uh, the thing to be a misunderstanding that there is a road existing to the north.
Did everybody hear this? He said that there's a misunderstanding that there's a road to the north. That's not working very well. Yeah?
If you guys aren't talking, you should mute your microphone, stop the echoing.
What else do you have to say? And unfortunately, I don't know technology wise, how to get him to be heard. Looks like he's still on there. But like it. Ed, can you hear us? Okay, well, the only comment I got from him was, oh, here he comes again. Hello, Ed?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on. Perhaps you should go to Terry Anderson, he may be set up better than I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the next person. That was Stan Olean. So hold on a second. There he is. Hey, Stan, you there? You were on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can the commissioners hear him?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there was a couple of things that I was prepared to say. But in the beginning, hearing Matt Peterson, the only question I had mainly probably was go to Matt Peterson, was going to be the elevation of these storage units. And the reason I bring that up is part of my objections to what we understood a year ago by others in the city telling us that light manufacturing could have elevations to their buildings of 60 foot. And that could present some problems. And I don't present that as a problem for view. I present it as a problem for what I would call a sound wall. The problem I have with that property down there, and in my research and study, the level of the ground, which is level with the walkway, is 30 feet below the railroad tracks. Or, in other words, the railroad tracks are 30 feet above the level ground of which those buildings would be produced. Now, we have three sets of railroad tracks on the east of that property between that property and our house, our homes. And along that property are two that are heavy freight trains. And one is a light rail, so all three rail lines go along the eastern part of that property. Now, all that being said, and Steve, you can attest to the fact, as you stood on my balcony and heard the trains come by. If you build anything above 30 feet, i.e. go to 60 foot elevation, you create a sound wall, and all that sound from those trains will reverberate back to the homes on the east side of the tracks. It could become a noise nuisance to take care of in the future. Therefore, my recommendation is, is that if you do choose to go to light manufacturing, that the elevation still be kept in line with a maximum 30 foot elevation. Wherein this is a newly construction going on and not dealing with existing buildings there. That's an addition that could be put on to the zoning. As I've talked with other city officials and things that you have done in the past, you've taken zones and you've put particulars on those zonings, rezonings, to meet the needs of the people at that time. So my recommendation was to put a maximum elevation of 30 foot on those buildings. I've seen some buildings, new storage buildings coming in around well, Sunset particularly, that are well over 30 feet high. And as I said, I don't object to the, for the view, but I do object to it for the amount of noise enhancement that's going to go up with the railroad and the rail lines along that eastern corridor. And I'd like you to give some consideration to that and keep that in mind with what's going on. That's all I have to ask for.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Steve, do we have another?
Yep. Clay and Jeanette Colby. There they go, okay. Not sure who I have, if it's Clay or Jeanette, Jeanette, Janet, sorry. But you're, if you unmute yourself, you can talk.
Okay, can you hear us now?
I can.
Yes.
So we also have Joel and Lyndy Reed sitting with us. My first question is, with all of this rezoning, is the planning commission aware that there is a legal case against the six property owners that these developers have brought against us that's pending right now? And if you are, how is, how is this going to affect the legal case? Because they brought this against us, so without meeting all of us.
Who? Janet, who else do you have with you?
Joel and Lyndy Reed.
Also landowners.
They're landowners as well. Reed.
R E I D?
Yes.
Okay. And your address, Mr. Reed and Mrs. Reed?
Our home address or?
The address that we're at, our, our property is the same. We're joint property owners with the Colbys.
Okay, there's only one property owner according to the county.
Well, not according to what our bank statement says, so I don't know where that's. Will they need to register the new, the address for them?
Well, I assume there's two buildings and each one of you own a different building?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the only way to get it under separate ownership is you will have to subdivide the land.
We've been, we've been included in this lawsuit, so I, somewhere along the way, apparently somebody's got that information.
Okay, well, I, I don't, but that's okay. So the planning, I'll, I'll answer the planning. They are unaware of any legal actions going on at the, at the moment. They weren't labeled listed as anybody on there. So I don't, you know, I don't know how, what things will change with the rezone that I, I can refer to Brody Flynn, our, our city attorney, if he has any insight to that, but.
Ed has spoke with the attorney about this and with you when we were, when the lawsuit came forward.
Nice to finally see one of these people because we've never met them before, so you know, it's nice to see that face on there.
Yeah. Steve, can you, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. So this is Brody Flint. I'm one of the attorneys here for the city. We are not aware of litigation. I don't know that, is Roy City a party to any of this litigation?
No, they're not. It's against the six landowners. And I'm curious, if we change the land zoning, what does this do to the lawsuit? Or is the city going to, the planning commission going to put it at rest until the lawsuit is resolved?
So again, the city knows nothing about the lawsuit. So the, I mean, as far as the planning commission is concerned right now, it, it wouldn't prohibit their ability to make a decision or a recommendation to council. If there was an appropriate order from the court stopping us to do anything, then we would certainly take a look at that, but this pending litigation doesn't prohibit the planning commission from, from making a recommendation at this point.
My next question is, as it's obvious that there's problems everyone getting on and being heard, why wouldn't you table this until all the participants could either meet or figure out a better way? Obviously Ed can't get on. A lot of, a lot of them are not technically inclined to do this.
The unfortunate part is with the pandemic going on, the city has had this type of meetings since March, April. And I don't foresee it changing anytime soon until, you know, the pandemic is, is over or the cases that of positivity for the COVID, you know, decline. So like.
You decided to push this through?
Well, again, this is not the first general plan and/or rezone request that the planning commission and/or city council have heard. And until we are given the green light that we can actually have physical meetings, most cities and counties are using online for their meetings. It's unfortunate that there are some technical difficulties that come with it. But I don't foresee how we can function as a city without doing some sort of online meetings.
Okay, was there somebody else behind us? So obviously we can see where you're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I got Mr. Potter. Yeah, hold on. There he is. Hey, Todd, you there? You're on mute.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
There you go.
Okay. I do have a question. Previously, Dennis Williams tried to open a business back where it is already zoned, light manufacturing. Roy City would not allow it without him putting in a 60 foot road with curb and gutter. What has changed to make it okay to put, allow businesses back in there now with a 30 foot driveway that's dirt?
Again, this is just a rezone request. The details of how to access the property and stuff like that aren't, aren't under review. They will have to figure out how to get access to it. It necessarily have to be a 60 foot right of way because it can be a private road, but it would have to meet the fire department's requirements so they can access those businesses down there. Ed is in the same situation. He was only granted because when he got annexed into the city and had a valid business license that he could continue. So we'll have the street and, you know, the road and how it's done will still have to meet city standards. You know, road sizes and stuff do change. Private roads are allowed. So again, this is just a rezone request and not details of how everything's going to work and if they meet all the requirements.
Okay, how wide of a road is required or private driveway, I should say?
Well, that usually is dictated by the fire department. Usually they need 25, 26 feet of drivable space.
And does it need to be paved or can it be unpaved?
Well, I'll just have to meet the fire department's requirements. They'd have to be able to, to handle a vehicle that weighs 75,000 pounds, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Okay, Mr. Anderson. I think it's Mr. Anderson. It could be his wife. I'm not sure.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, some of what I have to say has been addressed, but on the advice of several people, this proposal is inappropriate due to the fact that there is a pending lawsuit regarding the access. And I might add that one of your requesters knows all about this lawsuit, Josh. And we understand the previous requests, several of which there has been in the past, have been denied due to the access situation. As far as discussing the lawsuit, that wouldn't be appropriate at this time, but there is one in process and it needs to be resolved before you can make a decision on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It's Bateman, Fred Bateman. Let's see where he is. Takes a minute between me making you a panelist before you actually get put on. Uh oh, did we lose you? Think I lost Fred. Fred, if you can get back on, when you do come on, I will put you on next. Okay, after Fred was the McVays, Blaine and Jan. There they are. Blaine, Jan, if you can unmute yourself.
There we go. I think I got it now.
Okay.
Okay. How's it going, Josh? Matt, they actually sold us the house here. So just, we had a few questions along with this, so let me start out with, first of all, what's the compelling reasons? And what's it deemed to be in the public interest for this?
What are the compelling reasons for what?
For the change. And, and how is it deemed to be in the public interest?
Well, I'm property owners have the right to request to change the zoning of their land. So the reasons for the change is the, the applicant has requested for it. The public interest, again, that's something the planning commission will have to discuss. All land within the city, the, the city would like developed. The land in between the tracks has, as we know, been vacant or underutilized for many years, so that public interest one will have to be determined by the planning commission if they feel that the requested re, zone is appropriate for the area and the uses that are within that. Both Matt and Josh have indicated that it'll just be storage units, so you know, you wouldn't have other light manufacturing businesses that could occur that would create noise. So I don't know if I answered your questions, but I think that's as best as I can get.
Okay, so according to the low dense, I'm sorry, the area that was zoned as of April 24th of last year, it was zoned for low density single family residential areas. So when did that change from the industrial?
It was decades ago when it changed. It used to be all light or low density. And then it has been slowly changing to light manufacturing. I couldn't tell you exactly when the properties to the north and south of it changed to light manufacturing. But it has in the past been light manufacturing.
Because we, just going on the Roy website, it was April 24th of 19. Actually shows it as low density, single family residential, just so.
Yeah, that's what currently zone is.
I'm sorry?
That's what it currently zoned.
Right, so I just don't understand where the manufacturing portion came from it.
That's what they're requesting.
Okay, so you're requesting to change from the general plan?
That, hence why, yeah, there's a request to change the general plan and the zoning map.
Okay. And how, how is that beneficial to the residents or is that something?
Well, again, that's something they have to determine. That people do want and people do use.
Okay, fair enough. And then our view from the west side, I know the gentleman earlier talked about the 60 foot elevation being a sound issue. Since the tracks are at a 30 foot level, anything over 30 foot would be impacting our view of the mountains and such. So that's, that is a concern that we have.
Okay.
Okay. And have any other spots of land been considered for this use?
Well, the use is allowed in, in any light manufacturing zone. This is just happens to be the one that these two gentlemen's have rights to.
Okay. Fair enough. That is our concerns, our questions, and so we have them on the record now.
Thank you for your comments. Steve, we got some more? Oh, yeah. Mr. Leon Wilson. After him, I see that Ed is back on. We'll see if we can get him so we can talk to him.
I'm here and appreciate your time, commission. The issue with that height limit is a concern. Being under 30 feet, I would find no objection as long as we were able to mandate that and that it's mandated as, as actual storage units. And that the, the issue with access on 4,000 is resolved. I think that'd be a good use of the property. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments. Okay, let's see if we, we'll try Ed again, see if we can get him to be heard. Ed, are you there? Calling me. Hello, Ed?
Yes, Steve, I'm sorry. I can't apparently get it on here. I'm not on the phone.
You're not on the phone?
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the phone, but.
Hello.
This is not working, Steve. This is a big, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I've got some comments to make, but apparently I can't do it.
Well, what are your com, Ed? What are your comments? And I can just repeat them. What are your comments and I can just repeat them? Okay, hold on a sec, let me. Okay, so his first comment is, this is not a public road. It is a private easement. The buildings that are there, many of them are set, don't meet setbacks from a public road. They are set basically right at the easement line and. It appears that they are trying to turn a private road into a public road. Okay, anything else, Ed? Okay. Um, okay, so we further went on. Currently, there's a lawsuit to pave the easement. Some of the concerns are water runoff. But there's no room for curb and gutter. There's currently a water line that's in the middle of the easement. And the concern is if they pave it, then it's going to be a little bit more costly to fix it. Or to even get to it. And there he's hoping that the planning commission will take into consideration the lawsuit and table. Until they, that is finalized. Hopefully I got everything that Ed wanted. If not, what I'll, I will reach out to him personally tomorrow and. Or Thursday, sorry, we're off tomorrow, Thursday and make sure that what I've got written down is what he wanted. And if it changes a little bit, I will email it to all of you. At least on record, we've got that that portion of stuff. Again, some of the run, the runoff curb gutter. And stuff would be resolved or have to be resolved during site plan approval. Those are things that we'll, we'll look at and they'll have to have to do. Again. The fire department will dictate how wide it can be and if they only need 25 feet, then that does leave room for. And what have you. Water lines are generally under roads, so this wouldn't be anything new. Yes, it does cost more when it's under roads, but it also is the. Easiest place to get to because it's in a public right of way. This would be private and I believe that the water line is for Hooper Water. I could be wrong. Don't quote me. As Brody had mentioned, the planning commission is unaware of the lawsuit and it's not. Since you are not a listing. A listed person on it. Yes, Brody, I misquoted that, but. I don't, I don't think you need to be concerned with it. It'd be something the courts will have to. Do. And. That deals more with the road itself and how they'll access, but not the zone of the property. And you're meeting with the zone. Hold on again, Ed's on. Hello, Ed. Okay. Okay. I mean, he made me aware that he did speak with me about the lawsuit, so I do remember that now. But again, since we're not a listed. Entity on that lawsuit, I'm going to take our attorney's advice and just. Let you guys proceed. You can ask Brody more questions about that when it comes time for you. I'm moving on. We have. Whoops. Mr. Burnett. Let's see where he go. There he is. Hey, Mr. Burnett, you're on.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
Now, talk or listen to Mr. Peterson, he talked about the homeowners objecting to. High density and I'm certainly one of those and have been vocal for the last over a year. But I did visit with Matt. He came down and he was on my neighbor's back porch and we talked about. Town homes and we thought that a nice town home. Subdivision be nice because of these new jobs at the. 5600 Interstate there with the 2,500 new jobs and good paying jobs, it would. Maybe attract people to our community and add to our. Property taxes and. Just the numbers may add to the percentage we get from sales tax from the county. But I agree with, one thing I agree with my neighbors, if it's no more than 30 feet. All my objections would be taken care of because I want to see my sunset and I don't want, I want privacy. In my backyard pool and I don't, and that would take care of my, my issues, so I don't have a. Problem with the storage units as long, or even. Light manufacturing as long as there's a restriction that they're only 30 feet high. And I don't think we can, I think you're going to have to make that restriction with the zone change, assuming that. Even Matt and Josh have changed their mind. They came in looking at high density apartments. And were convinced, I think, to go to some nice townhomes. And now because of access or trying to get some use out of this. Land, but they could change their mind again and it would be light manufacturing and I could end up with. 60 feet behind my house. I don't want that to happen. And so I guess my feedback is, right now with the height. I wouldn't have an opposition, but it should be nicer to look out at a nice. Town home subdivision down there if the access roads could be resolved in some way down the road, so. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least. And I'm going to probably murder her name. And I apologize in advance, Lacy, but it's Lacy's Sockwell. I probably murdered it and she can. Pronounce it correctly, but Lacy, I know. Is the correct way of pronouncing it. Hey, Lacy, you there? You're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, you pronounced it perfectly, just fine. I tend to concur with Stan Hollein and Leon Wilson and Byron Burnett. My only thought is. In making sure that that height restraint is mandated, living this close to where it's going to be built. I don't have a problem with. The storage units, I like that better than some of the other proposed plans. But to not only have it mandated in the zoning, but if they were to then sell the property, that it would still be a mandate. That it would be a storage unit and that that height would be the same. Or at least to keep that height, you know, with the multi-use or the light manufacturing. I looked into some of the options that they can have and for the most part, I'm good with all of it, but. To have like a tattoo parlor or tavern or bar, things like that, that's not something that I'm necessarily interested in having. Near our neighborhood. But yes, if that's something that they could consider and having it mandated and that even if it were to be sold, that it. Still follow those mandates, that would be awesome. And that's all that I would have.
Thank you, Lacy.
Yep.
Okay, that is everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve, for relaying the messages. And answering some questions during this time. Normally, if for everybody watching at this time, when we are in public hearing. That is the public's time to speak, so planning commissioners aren't allowed to talk during that time, respond.
You can if you want.
It's traditionally for your time, so we like you to ask the questions, but a lot of the questions that you have, we are unable to answer as well. Because we're listening to what you have to say. So. That being said. We, all the people have been heard. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes.
So let's, I'll need a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we are now out of public hearing.
At my end, I think I answered everybody's questions as they went, so. I don't know if you guys have any additional questions or things that you would like to talk about. It's up to you.
I have a question, Steve. So if they can't put houses there because of the fire code, they don't have the double access. Why could you put storage sheds there if there was a fire? Wouldn't you have the same problem?
Well, I can't talk for the. Fire marshal. But my understanding is storage units are not livable spaces. Townhomes are, so you would have families that are living there, storage units you wouldn't. Stored units could be sprinkled. They'd just have to abide by the fire code to meet the requirements. But I know Leroy's mentioned that. They only need one access for storage units.
And even with houses that close to it, because those houses look like they'd be fairly close, it's. That's what I just wonder if you couldn't have townhouses.
To the east, they're about 100 feet away. To the west, you still have the. The 40 or 50 foot right of way of the DNRG trail. So they're not right on top of them.
Okay.
But that, those would be things again that the fire marshal would look at when the site plan comes in. Is what do they need to do and what are they required to do? And we're just looking at the zone, not what use or how big or where it's at.
So it sounds like a lot of the. Citizens had the same concern about the height being 30 feet higher than what is already there, so the 60 feet. And then if they sold it, people were saying that they sold it, the zone could be changed again. Is that accurate?
Well, the zone can be changed whenever they want to request it to be changed.
Because whoever owns it can request it.
Right. So I just want to. Bring the screen back up, sorry. So if you look at the zoning map, and I hope everybody can see this. You got the dark green, which is their property that's being requested to be zoned. To the south of it is already zone light manufacturing.
Okay.
And the ordinance allows for a 60 foot tall building. That's not under request right now to be rezoned and restrictions could be put on it, on that. So to me, it's like, okay, we put restriction on this acreage, but the rest of it, which is the same zone. One has restrictions, one doesn't. It, to me, and Brody can step in if I've overstepped or if he needs to clarify some stuff, but. What type of use? You know, the zone allows for several times or types, the. Applicant has said it would be for storage units. I haven't heard him agree that he's okay with, you know, less than 30, but if 30 feet is the top of the railroad. You're not blocking view if you go higher than that. But I'm, you know, I'm not going to get into it because again.
Yeah.
It's, it's something you guys are going to have to look at, but. Knowing that the area, there is light manufacturing now and if Hooper Water wanted to build. Their store, their water tanks at 60 feet, there's nothing that we could do. And if the gentleman that owns the next five acres wanted to build storage units, he could go 60 feet or. But any type of use in there. So you've got to take into consideration not just this, but the area.
Steve, does the municipal code as it stands right now, even have a mechanism to. Allow a restriction put on a certain property within a zone?
Um. All, maybe Brody can answer that. I'm going to make him earn his money. So that is a good question and it's important to think about what we're doing here tonight. I mean. You guys are just talking about the zoning change. Right now, the zone is at 60 feet. We don't have a mechanism. Short of redoing the whole zone to make it 30 feet. So, and it's also important in that conversation to remember, these are all good questions and. Valid or invalid concerns, however you feel about them. But we're not approving a project right now.
Right.
You're approving the zone. Right now, the zone is at 60 feet. And I shouldn't say you're approving, you're talking about a zoning change, that's it. Right now, the zone is at 60 feet. If the commission feels like it should be 30. Then we could look at that next meeting, but as far as parsing out 30 feet here, 60 feet here, our code isn't set up to do that.
Thank you, Brody.
Brody, I have another question for you. So when they're talking about this lawsuit, could we be named in the lawsuit if whoever suing who gets mad?
I don't know anything about what the merits or the allegations of the lawsuit, but. As far as you personally, no. If they want to sue the city, if we've done something wrong, yeah, they can do that, but people do that all the time where. That happens. But they won't come after you, Samantha. You won't have to go find your own attorney. We take care of it.
Oh, good, because I don't have any money. Okay, thank you.
We're just a recommending body on this, aren't we?
So, yes. You could, you could recommend just moving it on without any stipulations and let the council. Be the deciding factor, or if you guys felt that there was compelling reasons, you know, you could, you could do that as well. But. Me personally, I think just make a recommendation and let it lie or fall on someone else to do the rest.
Is it feasible, like, once they put up the site plan and we see, then we could do like. In heights restrictions or no, because of the suede zones, is that correct?
Well, when they make, the zone would have to be amended. The verbiage in the zone itself, so the, in this case, the height. If you're thinking that it needs to be changed, then you're looking at light manufacturing altogether, not just here. So you could, you know, forward this onto the council and say, okay, well, let's take a look at amending. The zoning. And amend the height allowance. That's one way of doing it. But at site plan, when they make application, they have rights, what's on the books at that time. So say they did.
Should we ask Matt, like, what his intentions are right now? Like, if he has any ideas? That not be prudent right now, because this is just zoning.
This is just zoning, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, we do have more questions. All right.
I I was just gonna say, so really, our responsibility on this is to take a look at the property itself and decide what the best practical use for the property is, period.
Correct. Hence those questions that I posed you towards the end of my presentation. It's the last of your staff report is would changing or not changing this be the best for the property to be developed? And is it best suited as light manufacturing or multifamily?
Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
On that, on that line, on that train of thought where you talk about considerations, my sticking point is the overall benefits to the community. I from what I'm hearing, and maybe I didn't hear everybody who was speaking, it seems that we've had technical difficulties. And maybe what needs to happen is we need to make sure that everybody who wanted to speak had a time to speak. And if they didn't, that we could maybe give them time to give us their input, because I'm not hearing from these residents, granted, there are only a few, that there are very many benefits to the community.
Well, that's something you're gonna have to decide.
At the city council meeting, though, correct, too, like?
What was that?
I say we could have more of a public notice for the city council meeting, too, right?
Our ordinance does not require, planning commission has has to have the public hearing. Not city council. Now, best interest in public, in in what way? By use itself, property tax? Height of bill, I mean, you know, those are things, because right now, property tax wise, on vacant ground, it's pretty minimal. You build a a storage unit facility that's worth, you know, ten, fifteen million dollars, what are the property taxes going to be to that? At a hundred percent, because it's commercial, what benefit does it come to the community? So how would be the best use of this land? Because anything that's built on it only improves the tax base for the city.
What does it do to the character, the nature of that area? I'm looking at your note, your considerations. So the effect of the number two, the effect of proposed amendment on the character of the surrounding area. What's that supposed to look like? What's what is the character of the surrounding area?
Well, ten acres to the south of it is light manufacturing. Eight eight acres to the north of it is light manufacturing. So what character is of the area?
That's what I'm asking you. That was your.
I'm just telling you, to the west is is single family, to the east is single family.
So you've got a single family, single family, then you've got these industrial areas in between light manufacturing and so forth, right?
Yes.
So when I'm looking at number two and number five, I'm not seeing how that, aside from taxes, and I get that, that's why we're in business as a city, we're a corporation. But I don't understand, again, how this benefits the community. When I think of the community as a whole, I'm thinking when I drive down that road and I see what it looks like, is that the best use of that property that we want to have storage units there? Uh, what we're hearing, yeah, what we're hearing from residents is maybe they don't want that.
Well, in most cases, they are more concerned with height than the use.
And I heard they'd rather have that than homes, because there could be, with the height of that, people be able to see into their backyards and lose privacy and things like that.
And I also heard, I also heard somebody say they would rather have homes there so that we have places that people can live in that are coming off that, off the Hill Air Force Base and lots of personnel that we're going to have there.
Yep.
Haven't we already?
You're asking the questions of why I didn't give a recommendation, because I.
No, I'm not. I'm not.
I see both sides of the issue of that, yes, it there should be multifamily residential in the area to help with, you know, affordability and and stuff like that. But I also see the other side that can that area develop as multifamily with the restrictions that exist? You know, this may be one of those uses that even though you do have multi or residential to east and west of it, it may be the only use that's really can be built on. Hence why I didn't give you a recommendation, and hence why you guys get paid the big bucks to make that decision. You have big bucks, uh-uh.
No.
Well, we get paid. Just kidding.
Well, no, this is a complex problem here, because it's one of the things we were told not to, that we can't take into real consideration is, I mean, I know people don't like their views blocked, but you don't own a view. Nobody owns a view to anything. Unless you own the land from your property all the way to wherever you want to view, you cannot guarantee that as anything. And it's one thing that's been brought up many times in our training and all the, you know, some lawsuits that have gone on in the past about stuff. So we have to take into account what the zoning is for that property, what what it can go to and what we're legally allowed to do. I, me personally, I think the best use of the land would be probably, I don't know, storage sheds. If there was a possibility to be able to restrict the height to please the residents, I I would be all for that as well. But under the legal constraints that we have, I'm not, I don't know if I'm confident about what that would entail. Lawsuit wise, yeah, we don't have any party privy to that. And and even all depending on what comes out of that lawsuit, they may not even be able to have rights to the property or whatever, anyway, or access. So and then it would be a moot point. I personally don't know that change in the zoning at this time would be any of any benefit personally, without knowing anything else, but I don't know, this is a tough one. I don't know of anything that would block it either.
All right, let's ask the attorney in the room. Brody, you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what is the timeline for this development? And I know we can't know the specifics of this lawsuit, but it has something to do with access and how the road is maintained, or was that the easement, or was that putting in streets? I was trying to make notes, but apparently I'm not very good at making notes like I read.
I I know, I I hope you you know me well enough to take this in good jest. I always, I always get concerned when people can't, when we're not in the room. But this lawsuit, quite frankly, has no no basis in our discussion tonight.
Okay.
It it just doesn't. Like I said, if if this was something that would block what we're doing tonight, the attorneys representing the parties would have us documents from a court saying, don't do this or do this. We, you know, it's no different, you know, I might be suing Mr. Brand because of something he did, but that wouldn't affect what we're doing here tonight. It's the same thing. I understand people's emotional reaction to that and and maybe, you know, heightened voices and stuff. But as far as a discussion of what's the appropriate zone, it it's just not relevant to our conversation. Now, later on, if a development goes through that says, you know, and they're doing something against a court order or something that may or may not be affected, then that lawsuit might be very relevant. But again, that would be their attorney's responsibilities to let the city know that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. That makes sense.
Annette, just as well is access wise, it wouldn't matter what zone we have on it, the access is a problem. Regardless if it's RE twenty as it is, light manufacturing as requested, or commercial. But that's, is that a a zone request problem or a site plan problem?
Sounds like a site plan problem. The total planner, you would know.
So at the site plan, yeah, a lot of these will have to be resolved. But I mean, zoning request, is that really something we need to worry about?
If if I understand that, if this were to remain a residential property, and we were talking strictly feasibility here, there would need to be some kind of a provision in place or way to make it happen to where you have a public road that could stretch from four thousand south to forty eight hundred south to make any kind of a livable space in here or residence feasible in this area, correct? That means you'd have to find a way to dedicate right of way, sixty feet wide, from four thousand south to forty eight hundred south. That would have to happen before you could have a residence in here, correct? So in RE twenty, when we're when we're talking strictly feasibility and re in reality, it's a long shot.
Yeah.
It it, Steve, I think it's not even a long shot. In the background in your document, you state that a little history of the area prior to the seventies, the area between Hickory Drive and fifty two hundred was owned industrial. Between since nineteen eighty four, there have been no developments and no housing and no condos or nothing else. It probably cannot be developed for that type of thing, no matter how many people come to Hill Air Force Base or how much we would like to have that as part of our tax base. I think that changing the zoning and then dealing with height restrictions or other things later on, when a site plan comes before us, would be a proper action tonight.
Thank you for the comments, Taurus. I I tend to agree with you as well. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have, I'm still pushing back this community benefit. I don't understand how this benefits the community. Again, besides the taxes, I understand we need the revenue. But is this the best use for the community, this number five, the overall community benefits? And I'm not hearing that. Maybe I'm being obtuse. I'm not trying to be, but I'm not hearing it to my satisfaction, at least.
Okay, so Annette, let me pose it back to you. What use do you think would be best suited in that area, knowing some of the constraints of the land?
Good question. And I I honestly, I don't know what it could be or what it would look like. But it seems to me that there might be something, and I don't know how we decide these things necessarily, but, you know, not a bar or not a tattoo parlor, that makes sense. I get that. The community doesn't necessarily benefit from that, that necessarily, as not as much as revenue as they would get from these storage facilities. So let me put it back to you, Steve. What what could we put there? That wouldn't be a storage facility. Would it only be something like that? We couldn't put residences there. I get that.
Well, in in your light manufacturing, you can have
All kinds of things.
A commercial daycare, which is going to have it. I mean, access issues are going to be prevalent for everything. Okay? Commercial daycare. Now you get people working and living in there. So fire is going to probably require two access. Commercial plant nursery, an indoor soccer field you could put, an outdoor soccer field, a construction cells and service, a contractor's arf office and storage yard, a convenience store, a drive up, drive through facility, manufacturing minor, which is a building that's fifteen thousand square feet or less. Condition used for a manufacturing major. Oh, no, that's not allowed, sorry. Public utility, so gas, water, electrical. I mean, the I mean, the list is is.
Extensive, it seems, yeah.
But access is always going to be
An issue.
Something that has to be resolved.
Yeah.
So again, two accesses for anything where you're going to have people living there. Or if it's commercial, they'll probably, you know, I don't know what the fire department will require. So some of these questions here, you know, we're wanting details to general questions or, yeah. But knowing the the area, light manufacturing is already there.
Oh, can I ask a question to Annette? Would you? So Steve, if we say this is going to be light manufacturing, then when the site plan comes, then there can be restrictions on those kind of things like where, oh, because it's, it just is the same.
It would have to be done prior to any applications being made. Because the landowner has rights when they make application for what's allowed or not allowed at that moment.
Am I hearing you correctly, Steve, that you're saying that if we want to allow light manufacturing with restrictions that we've discussed tonight, heights or whatever else, then we must have a zoning change in the ordinance that says these are the rights that are enumerated, and then whenever the application's made, that's what we deal with at that time.
That makes sense to me.
Um, well, again, I'll refer to Brody if this is the body in which would make recommendations for restrictions in the zone.
But wouldn't that be changing the the thing for all light manufact- manufacturing in the whole city?
If we say next meeting is a work session and you guys want to bring light manufacturing up so we can change the height, that's the time and place to do it. Brody, go ahead.
Yeah, no, Steve's articulated that correctly. So let's say everyone agrees that it should only be thirty feet. You you can't do that today. Right now, you're voting on whether or not to recommend approval or or not of this zoning change. If you want to put restrictions on the height in all light manufacturing, that can be done, but it needs to be done separately.
Boy, me playing an attorney on TV is rubbing off, I guess.
All right, shall we go ahead and vote?
Chair, it's up to you. Your meeting.
Yeah, it sounds like we've kind of had our discussions, so we'll need a motion to either table or approve or deny.
Well, you'll need separate motions for the amendment to the future land use map and the the rezone. You can't, the future land use map slash general plan has to be first. And if you do table that, then the rezone just follows suit without necessarily a vote.
I make a motion to table the request to amend the future land use map for mixed use for light industrial for property located at approximately twenty four forty nine west, four thousand south, based primarily on the changing or thinking about and considering changing the height restrictions because of the sound problems that would be created with the current zoning.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. If I'm all right.
Here's some eyes.
Is this roll call?
Yes.
So my apologies, I I thought it was all in one. Forget.
So, Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Felton?
Nay.
Mr. Collins?
Nay.
Mr. Mifflin?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Nay.
Mr. Bills?
Nay.
Mr. Spar?
Aye.
Well, it's defeated four to three.
Okay, well, it's that dropped, so we would have to have another motion. Okay, well, it's that dropped, so we would have to have another motion.
So I can make a motion to approve, to amend the future land use map for mixed use light industrial property located at approximately. Twenty four forty nine west, four thousand south.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
Jason.
Okay, Commissioner Brand?
Nay.
Uh, Commissioner Bills?
Nay.
Okay, Mr. Spar?
Aye.
Commissioner Mifflin?
Nay.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Felton?
Aye.
Mr. Payne?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed four to three.
And we will also need a motion for the second item.
Hey, I make a motion that we amend the zoning map from RE twenty to light manufacturing for the property. Located at approximately twenty four forty nine west, four thousand south.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call. Mr. Felton?
Aye.
Mr. Mifflin?
Aye.
Mr. Spar?
Aye.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Payne?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Yeah, it passes seven to zero. At the moment, I don't know if it'll be on next week's city council or the first one in December.
Hey. Thank you, Steve. Thank you to all the residents that have come and spoke about this. This will be going to the city council meeting. Um, so as that time comes up, you can also attend that meeting. It will be more likely an electronic meeting like this one was. Um, so. Again, thank you for the comments. We do take it into consideration. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which will be commissioners' minutes. Any commissioners have anything that they would like to address at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to gen item number six, which would be the staff update. Steve, do we have anything new?
Uh, not much new. I know people are moving into those townhomes, um, there on Midland Drive in four thousand. Uh, the first four buildings are being occupied, so several are moving in there and they're starting the next four. Other than that, that's, you know, about it I can think of. So seven eleven there on the corner is getting pretty close, so. Yep, all I have.
You're right.
Questions?
Anybody any questions for Steve before we do the final motion to adjourn?
No.
No.
All right, that being said, we'll be looking for the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and consideration tonight. You guys have a good evening.